TV, there are members of the media in the audience as well. If anybody would like a copy of tonight's meeting, please let any of us know at the end of the meeting. I would like to first open the meeting up with a moment of silence for a former educator in the Milford School System of thirty-five years, Elaine Dwarken. If I may, please have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Thank you. Our condolences go out to the families. Welcome, everybody, again. The first agenda item is approval of the minutes. Has every member had an opportunity? We have a motion from Patrick, second from Scott. All in favor?
One exception.
Yes. Okay. Next agenda item is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Does any member have any announcements, correspondence, or distributions?
Mr. Chairman, I have, first, in case this anticipation of breaking news of a school cancellation tonight, I am not doing that. I am telling you that we are watching the weather and is hoping we go through the year without a snow day this year. But we'll watch and see, and of course, the Highway Department and I will be communicating throughout the night. Eleven o'clock, we'll check in, and then again, four o'clock tomorrow morning. So it likely will not be a call from me tonight, but early tomorrow morning, if anything. So just to give that a little update. And also, for members of the school committee, just to announce, if you haven't responded already, if you could let me know, on Saturday, we have our student delegation from China who's arrived this week. The business is going very, very well. We have a world language event on Saturday evening. It's to celebrate our world language programming in the Milford Schools and also our exchange programming with Italy, France, Spain, and China. And so we do have that event, thanks to the cooperation of Mr. Walsh. The Imperial Cars were able to do the Imperial Room for that event on Saturday evening from five to nine P.M. So it'll be a great night of celebration for our programming and to recognize and thank our host families over the years. So if the committee members have the opportunity to be there, if you haven't already RSVP'd, if you kindly let me know, and we'll make sure we have a spot for you that evening. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have no other announcements this evening.
Thank you. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Invitation to speak. Moving right along. Next agenda item is the Milford High School Liaison to the School Committee. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Goddett. I'm president of Student Leadership at Milford High School. I'm here to just let you guys know, I've been here, I don't know if you remember me, but I was here like a month or so ago, talking about what was going on into the school. So I'm gonna update you guys. So recently, a couple of weeks ago, we had the prom fair. It was like booths that, like businesses came where it was like, there was even a booth for dresses, for prom dresses. I even took a look. There were some cute colors. And then there was some other stores that was like hairdressers, barber shops, to get your tuxedos, to get your nails done, even limousine rentals for students who aren't able to do that. They have this option now to go and look and place appointments for their hair. So it's a little less stressful when the time comes. And the hospitality tourism students, they were the ones that ran that, and they did a really good job. They had some refreshments, they had drinks. It was all very well-run. I think an applause should go to them. They did a very nice job. We also had midterms last week. It was a little stressful for me. I don't know about any of those students, but they went great. It was really smooth. They ended last Thursday, and then the new semester started on Friday. All new classes, so it's pretty exciting. We also have global citizenship certification, which is run by Mrs. Allegretta. She's an Italian teacher. And it's sort of, it's for sophomores and freshmen, and it's kind of run as the hospitality and tourism where it's a two-year program for students to get involved in global study classes. There's also academic, I don't know if I'm saying this right, but sophomore segments? It's for, it was a meeting that was held last Tuesday for course offerings next year. It was very well-attended, and it will be shown on Milford TV soon. There is also teacher recommendations coming up. MHS teachers will be posting recommendations for students for their next year's classes and what levels they should be taking, and that's an ongoing process. Recently, last Sunday, we had the DCU playoff game for Milford varsity basketball boys. I don't know if you guys saw it, but it was pretty intense. I was there cheering on the sidelines. They did a really, really good job. They won seventy-six to sixty-one. So that was a big win for them. I know that they, it was a really tough win, but they fought through it. So it was a really good job. And that was against North Attleboro. Also, there was a Chinese exchange program, like you said. I was in the library, actually, when that was going on, the program, when you guys were introducing them into the school, which was kind of cool, 'cause you never really see that. I am going on the Italian exchange student program, so I'm gonna be that student in like a week or so. But it was kind of interesting seeing them, looking at our culture and seeing what our school systems was like. And so Mrs. Benak and Mr. Trembley, they introduced them, they kind of welcomed them into the school and asked them what they would be doing, if they were excited, and they all seemed pretty cool about it. And there's been a teacher and a Chinese student in my AP Government class, and they all pretty excited about it. And Mr. Bontempo in our debate today in class. So that was pretty cool. And then we have informal questions and coffee Friday morning at seven fifteen at the high school, where parents will be able to meet with Principal Benak and Dr. McIntyre and talk about course selections and goals for the rest of the school year and district. And then for me personally, there's, me and Miss Benak has been working on a voting day and voting registration for the school. I was, I'm a part of this group with Congressman Kennedy, and it's kind of like a youth group. And I got the idea where students are be able to, who are over eighteen or eighteen, will be able to sign up to vote and register to vote for the upcoming election, since we have a president election, and that's pretty important for students to get involved in that. So we have that coming up on March eighth. It's gonna be open for students and staff to come down the last two mods. And that's it.
Nice job.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open it up.
Yeah.
So thank you for coming again. Good to see you back again. A quick question for you. I was just particularly interested in, obviously, with the, I love the fact that you're bringing the voter registration in, working with Congress and Kennedy. Have you als, did you coordinate also with, with the town hall, with Amy Neves as far as voter registration? From a timing perspective, obviously, the national election, the presidential election is very, very important. I think it was Tip O'Neil that originally said, "All politics is local." And obviously, our first local election is coming up in April. So certainly, the more involved you guys can be, that would be great. So if that's gonna be coordinated, do you know if that will be coordinated?
Yeah, so I emailed her a couple of weeks ago, asking how I should go about this, who I should contact, if there needs to be like a town, if she needs to be there to like help register these people. And she said, "All I need to do is go there." She has forms set out for me, and I would just pick up the forms, bring them to the school, and just have the people fill them out, and I have to have it in if they want to vote for the town elections. I have to get it in by March sixteenth. So I'm having it on March eighth, and then I can, I'm telling the students and the staff, if they want to take home or if they want to sign up for registration, they can bring it back into the school. And I was gonna bring it in on that Friday to the town office, so we can pass it in just in time.
There you go. That's great. Thank you.
Any other member?
Are you hoping for a snow day tomorrow?
I really am. I kind of want to sleep in.
I think most seniors are. I wouldn't be surprised.
I know, I really am.
No promises.
Me too, I bet.
Well, I don't want to drag a promise.
We have a woodman's school to build.
I think most teachers are as well, Bob.
All right, yeah, no pressure.
Don't weaken the superintendent, whatever you do.
So I've stood behind this one for a lot of years.
School.
You should also Memorial School. I don't want to point that out. If Jose Viero were here, I'd have to point that out.
He's probably watching.
He probably is. So Jose, another one from Memorial School. Great job.
Thank you guys.
Very nice.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Next agenda item is recognition of student athletes. Get Mr. Boucher up here. You sure can.
So Ryan, we have Ryan Tomaso, we have Ryan Gregg. Pretty easy tonight, Ryan and Ryan. Can't make any mistakes. I don't know if you want to introduce, want me to introduce him or just kind of?
Sure, go ahead.
Briefly, and then we can just maybe talk a little bit, but Ryan has the distinct honor of being the Hockamock League MVP in golf. And I've watched him play many, many times, and I will tell you that on his worst day, it would be my absolute greatest day of golf ever in my entire forty-five years on the planet. He's that good. And having been in this league for, you know, twenty-nine, thirty years, the Hockamock League, I can tell you that being named the MVP is the pinnacle of just about anybody's career. It's, it means you are not only the absolute best of your team, you're the absolute best in the league. And that means the head coaches in the league, the twelve coaches, voted you in. So for him to have that type of, first of all, his gameplay, what was your best round this year?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two for nine holes. Hello. That's pretty darn good. That's, that would be a course record on many golf courses, and I think he holds a couple records around here and there. But to be voted in and have the respect of the other head coaches, of course, we love him in Milford. He's playing for us, and we have him back next year. That's a good place to be. To be, to really to have that respect from the other head coaches is pretty tremendous. So I thought that, you know, I appreciate you folks bringing him in and wanting to kind of recognize him this evening. Just a great place to be. He is the captain, he was the captain this year, he's the captain-elect for next year, and we're excited to have him back. Ryan is also in a very similar situation. He's one of our football players, he's one of our wrestlers. We think he's gonna do spring track this year. Ryan is kind of a unique guy in his own way, and I mean that in a very positive sense. At any point in time in Massachusetts, there's about three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-thousand student athletes. And basically, what happens is from that gene pool, about two-hundred-and-fifty of them get encouraged to go to Stone Hill College for a four, is it four days?
Yeah.
Four-day, I should know, I've been there each year, but I don't stay for every day. For a four-day leadership conference that is really run by the New England Leadership Council, but the MIA spearheads it, they also invite New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York, and Canada. And out of those two-hundred-and-fifty kids from Massachusetts, what happens is fourteen to sixteen of them are chosen to be on the Student Advisory Committee for one or two years. He was chosen for this year, which is, it's almost a lock that he'll be chosen for next year. So the reality is, out of that three-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, they pare it down to about fifteen people. And he's been chosen not only because of his athletic, you know, skills, not only because of his academic acumen, but because of his ability to get out in the community. He does all sorts of things, and I'll let him talk about that. He's in our best buddy program, his grades are off the chart. I mean, you name it, this guy does it well. I was telling, I did an interview with Milford TV today. When I first got the job last year in the winter, I was here late every night, trying to really get my handle around, you know, what Milford was like and what I wanted to do. And I had my kids and my wife here for dinner, and I thought, "I'll run upstairs to the wrestling room, let them run around a little bit." I opened the door, and Ryan's in there with two guys, and it's seven o'clock at night. This is just to give you a snapshot of who he is. It's seven o'clock at night, there's a senior and a freshman, and I recognized right away, they're new guys on the team. And I said, "Oh, did you change practice?" I said to Ryan, "It's like, no, I was just kind of hanging around, showing them some new moves." And I said, "Hey, guys, sit down." You know, my two boys, I want them to wrestle. I said, "Hey, sit down and watch this guy working with two new guys and on his own time." You know, so we're lucky to have these two guys in multiple different facets. And, you know, they're just sort of a snapshot of what we have in Milford High School. So I appreciate you, you know, bringing them here tonight and recognizing what they do for us and the hard work that they both put in to really be the absolute best in the realms that they're in. We're proud of them. Very proud of them.
I'll open it up to you. Do you want to, have any opening remarks you'd like to say?
I mean, it's definitely a great honor to be named the Hockamock MVP.
You think?
Don't go off with it.
No, the Hockamock's known as one of the better leagues in the state, and so to be known as the best in that league is definitely, I don't know, something good, yeah. So that's good.
Could I interject to you? One of the reasons he's not really capable of doing any other sports is because he golfs year-round. There are weekend tournaments that he gets invited to that, you know, someone like me would only dream to be able to observe, you're just not good enough to be there. He'll get calls, if I'm not mistaken, right, where he's flying to Florida, he's flying to Arizona to play in these tournaments that, you know, basically, Division One college prospect is really what you're talking about. It's just, it's unbelievable. It's really, it's really kind of neat to be just on the sidelines, watching him do what he's doing.
I actually just flew down a couple of weeks ago to Darrell to play in a three-day tournament. So I play the Blue Monster, that's where they play the WGC Cadillac Championship. Tiger actually won it kind of, I think, two or three years ago. So I get, I get the opportunity to play a lot of high prestigious courses, and so it's fun.
That's great. Good for you. Good for you. How about you, young man?
I gotta thank Mr. Boucher, 'cause he kind of got me off the ground with all this MIA stuff. He kind of got me going to N S L C, and he knows the people at the MIA, so, you mean, half the time when I'm down there, I see him down there, and, you know, we get a little fist bump or something. But it's, it's great that he was able to get me there, and I think that was just kind of the stepping stone for, you know, all these opportunities. And it really is a great opportunity to make a difference and kind of make a change and help, you know, others lead and help train leaders, and, you know, the whole situation's really great.
Yeah, his committee really will help set the vision of what the MIA is doing for the next one or two years, and I probably should have, and he's, he made it easy. He was an easy nomination. Thank you for saying that. But, you know, what they do is they will get intimately involved. When the MIA hosts a training, even for adults, like we were at Gillette. Gillette had all of the captains come in, Gillette Stadium hosted it. His group was there hosting some of the workshops, because they've been trained to take, you know, with new leadership skills and to give back. And if there's something being hosted in Franklin or out west, that group of fourteen, fifteen kids, those are the ones that they'll call on to say, "Hey, we gotta get ready for this. We need you to be able to implement this," and they're ready to go. So he's way ahead of the game when it comes to leadership skills. It's a really cool, cutting-edge sort of program.
Open it up to the board. Patrick?
Did either of you guys take part in the leadership conference that we ran, that Peter ran earlier in the year?
Well, he's, he's a little bit, Ryan is not, he's not a captain-elect.
Okay.
You're a captain for next year.
I am now, yeah.
We, I think we, we had invited, but you weren't able to make it at that point in time in the, in the summer.
Yeah, I was not able to make that either.
Yeah, Ryan was up close.
I, I, I.
The summer one, yeah. I've been to about a million leadership conferences. Yeah, the summer one, I was there for, yeah.
So they've got to be drop-ins as far as that goes moving along.
Yeah. I've taken part in a lot of leadership conferences during the year with him. Kind of later in the day, two o'clock, and pull out a class, which I think have helped a lot with our sports teams and, and leadership, and that turns into more wins. And so I think it, I think him bringing the student leadership up has advanced our athletics a lot.
You know, that's, that's great to hear. You know, I feel like, you know, academic achievement and athletics are two very important pieces, but, you know, leadership is probably the piece that you're gonna carry with you for the rest of your life. I mean, the love of golf, of course, is gonna extend for the rest of your life, and I'm sure, you know, always be involved in athletics, but that leadership just helps in sort of every facet of your life. And having that athletic experience tied to leadership, I think, is gonna serve you both really, really well. And it's great to hear that Milford students are earning the accolades from the Hockamock League. It makes me feel really, really proud and really good sitting here.
You bring up a good question, though. The next phase of that program, I'm working with Mrs. Benak right now. We're taking our elected captains who are juniors right now, and we're moving them into a couple of MIA leadership conferences that he's actually involved with. And then in the spring, we're gonna bring this crew in. You know, we're building as we go, so I appreciate you asking that. We're, we're kind of trying to build the perfect model as we go along. We have, we have a three-year plan to phase everybody in, but I think getting it started this year with your support and the administration's support was, was critical. But we're still, we're still trying to really make it the greatest situation it could possibly be and keep moving forward.
Thank you. So congratulations to both of you, and also to your parents as well, 'cause I, as, I can only imagine, flying and driving and the endless amounts of shuttling that goes along with that, and I'm sure you guys are grateful as well for the support that I know you certainly received from your parents and from home. So we talked, Peter, you talked a little about kind of the, you know, what does the future for sports look like for you guys, and obviously academics, you can't get into a college and play, and play college sports without it. With National Signing Day having been yesterday, are you guys starting to look at, starting to think about playing in college and starting to think about that as you move forward? You guys are gonna be, you guys are juniors right now, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Seniors next year. Starting to think about, starting to think about playing, possibly doing athletics in college and where that might be?
Yes, I'm definitely thinking about college. I know that I want to go down south and, so I can play golf somewhere warm.
That's a good idea.
Smart guy.
Yeah, so.
University of San Diego's pretty nice.
Yeah. So I've looked a lot of, I've looked at a lot of schools down south. So we're just kind of seeing where my academics go and where my golf game goes this upcoming summer. So nothing's really finally set yet or anything, but, no, yes, I am looking at colleges.
Starting to think about it.
Yes, definitely.
I'm sure they're looking at you as well. Thirty-two, holy smokes. I can't get past the third hole if I'm gonna finish.
Right now, I'm looking to wrestle in college, so I'm working on my record right now, hoping to place well at states and then move on to all states. I'm putting together like highlight tapes and all that stuff, and start sending out to some schools. Nothing in particular yet, 'cause, you know, starting to contact schools as a sophomore. I didn't really have the exact paper yet, but I think this year would definitely be a good year to, you know, place at states, possibly all states, and move on to talk to some schools.
Any advice you'd have for some of your classmates, maybe some of the underclassmen, that maybe looking at you guys going, "Well, you know, I'd kind of like to be there someday."
I would definitely say start early. I talked to a lot of schools. Actually, I have a ton of schools on my email right now that reply back, "We're set for 2017." I'd love to have you on my team, but I already have three guys coming in. And if I started emailing schools when I was a freshman or in eighth grade, or even last year, I think I would have a lot better shot to be one of those guys on the team, so.
He kind of comes from the athletic perspective. I'll go from the leadership perspective, is that anyone can step up. It doesn't take, you know, like you said, I was a sophomore and I was helping out seniors. Like, don't get intimidated by maybe somebody who has a little bit of, I don't want to say rank, but that kind of thing, you might be, you know, held back a little bit by that. But, you know, anyone can step up, anybody can lead. It just takes the personality and really the desire to make a change.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other men? Joe?
So I just spent the last three days golfing, and I think my lowest score was a hundred and two. I can't even fathom shooting the sixty or seventy.
And that's with nine holes.
But, yeah, I mean, you two are obviously great role models for all of our students, and you should be really proud of what you've accomplished here. And not only you great athletes, but, you know, clearly, as Peter pointed out, you're, you're great students, you're involved in the community from a community service perspective, and, you know, that's exactly what we want our students doing. So, you know, congratulations to both of you. And I also wanted to take a minute to just recognize Peter as well. You know, Peter, the network that you have and the relationships that you have with the MIAA are really making a difference here to bring notoriety back to Milford and really recognize the great athletes that we have here. And, you know, it's being, it's making a big difference, and it's really putting Milford back on the map, and we really appreciate all the work that you do.
Happy to do it. It's easy, you know, like we said, we have bunches and bunches of young folks like these that are just working hard and want to represent red and white, so, thank you. Appreciate it.
I just, congratulations to both of you. You guys are great examples for other people. And you're still getting good grades as well, too.
Yeah.
It's amazing what you guys do. I'm jealous sometimes. But amazing. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Ryan Tomaso, I gotta tell you, I have three older brothers that live to play the game of golf. I have no desire. I, congratulations to you, 'cause I just can't get it. But very interesting, I was handed some write-ups about the two of you early this evening, and it's very impressive, honor student. Some of the things that stuck out to me, youth ministry, leadership council, numerous volunteering going on in the community. It's really, I say this all the time, that's what makes the seven of us who sit at this table so proud, is that we get to meet young people like yourselves that, you know, not only are in the school system, but go above and beyond in your community, in volunteering efforts, best buddies, you know, programs like that. So you're reaching out to yourself to help other people, as well as doing what you do very, very well. So it makes all of us here very, very proud and a great job. I want to commend the two of you. Keep up the good work. Hopefully, someday, we'll see you both on TV.
You will.
So with that, the superintendent has a couple of little presents.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
I'll take some lessons from you.
Congratulations, guys. Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate your time, Peter. Again, great job.
Thank you, Peter.
Next agenda item, report of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Dr. McIntyre?
Last night, we had the MCAS two-point-oh presentation, and what we did as part of that is we had a number of parents in attendance. It was actually a very nice turnout. We reviewed Milford data on park, discussed testing for 2016, and presented what we currently know about MCAS two-point-oh, and then answered audience questions. Many of the questions focused on the potential new high school competency requirements under MCAS two-point-oh, because those are up in the air a little bit, not affecting this class or the next class, but potentially the class three years from now, the sophomore class three years from now. So there's a number of questions about that, computer-based testing, and the math standards kind of came up a few times from parents. I want to thank Craig Consigley, Corey Masterson, and Vicki Houston, who all participated in the event and answered parent questions. I don't know, Corey, did you want to mention anything about the event, or do you feel that covered it?
No, I think that, I thought it was a great event. There was some talk about the Common Core, and I think we kind of cleared up a little bit of confusion as to what the Common Core is and some of the programs that we cover here in Milford. There was a lot of talk about the everyday math program, and we were able to address the changes in the everyday math program from, you know, the former edition. There was a faster rate, and the spiraling was really, really quick, and the kids didn't wind up getting mastery of a certain topic until, you know, way at the end of the program. So with the new addition, there's less lessons within each unit, so the kids are able to, you know, spiral but also gain mastery quicker. So that was a nice conversation with the parents.
The other interesting piece that we talked about is that Education Week had an article, I think it was yesterday or Tuesday, that outlined the discrepancy between performance of the students that took the paper and pencil park versus the computer-based park. And actually, for ELA, the difference was pretty large and consistent across grade levels. Students who did the paper and pencil did significantly better than students that did the computer-based. With the math testing, it was a little more mixed, but students who, again, did the paper and pencil did better than, on average, the students that did the computer-based testing. We're moving to computer-based testing for MCAS two-point-oh in 2019, so I really, one of our big pushes in the next couple of years is to really prepare students to be comfortable, to be able to take testing, access testing in an online platform. That's something we're really gonna work towards.
Just a quick question for me. So as we continue to, knowing that that's coming down the pike here, and though 2019 feels like it's forever from now right now, the fact that we've already spent one day and we'll be back together and back at it on Sunday for the 2017 budget, just thinking about it from a budget impact perspective, with the technology that we're investing in, and as we move forward with the Chromebooks and things like that, will those be able to be integrated to be able to provide the, to be able to provide those exams?
Absolutely, absolutely. That was a piece that I want to make sure of. Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we selected the Chromebooks.
That was a major consideration for us.
Well, I figured as much, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't ask, so. Good.
Patrick?
So Kevin or Corey, how interactive was the presentation? I wanted to be there last night just to see if it was us speaking to parents or if it was parents giving us feedback as well.
Yeah, I think it was fairly interactive. I thought it was a very relaxed atmosphere, and I thought the parents felt very comfortable. You know, Kevin did, had a great presentation, but it was not so, you know, it was kind of a dry topic when you're talking about statistics, and you can sometimes lose parents that way. But I think that they were able to, you know, communicate and ask their questions. You know, I thought it was nice. I thought it wasn't just strictly run by the school. It was interchangeable, they had the opportunity to ask their questions. I think they got some really good answers. I think a lot of fears were erased. I think overall, it was very, very positive, very interactive.
Did you feel like parents came because they were concerned, or parents came for, to get information? I mean, did you get a feel for which way it was?
It was a little mix. A little bit of both. It was nice to, there was a wide range of parents there. There were high school parents, there were also parents from the elementary school. There were a couple of parents from Memorial.[1765.38] Um, and there was some fear from some of the parents that, are they, are they doing park at the elementary level? So, I think that was one of the fears that was immediately really, um, erased, but I thought it was a wide range of parents, a, a nice mix.
Yeah, no, I would, I would agree with that. I would say that, um, the high school parents were very concerned about the new graduation requirements. We had a parent who had a few students who were in middle school, who were, was really concerned about what is the graduation requirement gonna look like for my child? Who's in middle school right now. We could answer some of the questions, some information we just don't know at this point. But, you know, again, I think it was a lot of, um, kind of increasing understanding of like what the testing was, you know, what the testing is, what the standards are, how it connects to what we do on a daily basis. It's kind of a big picture. And, and I thought it was, it was a nice event and a lot of great questions from the parents too.
Jen?
Just one question. Did the article address at all, um, was the reason for the, um, greater performance on the paper pencil? Does that have anything to do with keyboarding and the fact that our kids aren't proficient and it, did that slow them down and what, what are you guys thinking about entering that into the curriculum?
There was a few theories that they, they posited and some of it was based on feedback from the testing that we even did in Massachusetts. We had some, um, the students did the online testing, were able to give kind of, um, feedback when they finished the testing, which we didn't, I don't think have the opportunity when we did the paper and pencil tests. So some of the theories are, one, uh, you know, keyboarding at the earlier grades was, was an issue. I think as you got further along that people felt that was less of an issue. Two was just familiarity with the platform, that students would move out of questions without answering them or they delete their answers and not be able to go back because they didn't understand how to manipulate just the testing platform. Um, you know, three is, uh, in Massachusetts particularly, about a quarter of students had issues logging on. About a quarter of students had issues, um, with like connectivity during the testing. And then some people, some students were logged out, which caused problems. But all that being said, sixty-five percent of the students that took the test still felt like they prefer the online testing, which I thought was interesting because they outlined all these problems and they said, hey, you know, most of us kind of like it anyways. So, I, I think we're, we're gonna get more information about kinda people's feelings about online testing and how best to approach preparing students for it. I think is, as we kinda move forward and, and it reinforces our decision not to do the online testing the first year. That it was offered broadly because I think the change from MCAS to park was probably enough.
Right, and all those things that you mentioned could have definitely broken their momentum in testing.
Absolutely, and, you know, I think it went relatively smoothly across the state, but there's pockets of like, you know, schools or grades that couldn't get online and you know, you know, some students have a lot of anxiety connected to testing anyways and I can imagine that would just ramp up if you're not able to physically log into your testing.
Right, and it is nice to see the kids coming home and doing things like ten marks and some of the supplemental online math programs especially. Because I think the more exposure, like you said, they have to those things, the better.
And they're just gonna start to feel more comfortable with it and it's gonna, a lot of the issues I think that happened this year with park testing, I think will slowly dissipate because they're more comfortable on keyboards, they're more comfortable with answering questions, responding to open response questions, which, you know, even the, it'd be in multiple sources. That was a big issue with ELA is, um, and Craig had a couple funny answers to that question, I thought. They were, they were great. He said, you know, if he's, if he's using multiple sources, he likes to print things out and have it next to each other so we can go kinda back and forth. Whereas if you're in the computer screen, you have to kinda scroll in and out of the articles. If you highlight something, it disappears and you forget to include it as evidence in your final answer.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Jen's question, uh, sparked another question in my mind. Um, did anyone in the state do, uh, and I know that, that we're not testing for this when we're taking these standardized tests, but anybody in the state compare, um, the grammar, use of grammar and grammar rules between, was there a difference between the online version and the written version?
Not, not that I'm aware of. I haven't seen that in anything that I've seen published at this point, but I'll, I'll keep an eye out for it, cause it's, it's, it's an interesting question.
Yeah.
Any other, Joe?
And Kevin, I can't, I can't recall that. I assume the, the MCAS two point O is still evolving, right?
Correct.
And is one of the questions still whether or not the test will be timed or, or is that a decision of?
Yeah, my, my sense, and again, I don't wanna get into the predicting game, but my sense is that because Massachusetts fought so vigorously with park to try to get that to be an untimed test, I think that'll probably be back on the table when we look at MCAS two point O or at least a significantly longer amount of time for students to get through the testing.
But this year's MCAS, which is kind of a hybrid, does have some park-like questions and it does have a timed component in the English Language Arts. There's one component of that is a sixty-minute timed block.
And that in of, it's, in and of itself creates a lot of anxiety for kids.
Sure.
Right.
It does, and that's the whole point is we wanna know what people, students know and are able to do, not necessarily in a select amount of time. Because everybody works at a different pace. So, we'll, we'll see what happens. I'm sure part of the reason they're doing the MCAS is a time, just to kind of test it out to see what it would look like and see if that's something they wanna look at for MCAS two point O.
Any other discussion?
You're in the two other events though.
Yeah, I was gonna, yep. So, um, we also have a homework forum coming up and that's Monday, February twenty-second at six PM. And the goal of that is to share homework expectations at each grade level and the issues principals and teachers are wrestling with related to homework. Um, answer parent questions and really begin a dialogue around homework and really engage kinda the, the parent community around homework and what some of their concerns are, what some of their questions are and some, some of the issues they're seeing with, with their child at home. Um, and we're, we're looking forward to that and I expect there to be a pretty big turnout, cause it's, it's an issue that people feel pretty passionately about.
I, I, I hope you're ready for it, because there's already a lot of buzz that I'm hearing.
Absolutely. And it might be, we might've turned it into a series if we can't get through everything that, that evening.
Right.
That's, that's very possible.
Yeah, that, I was thinking about that. I saw that as well, to Patrick's point. Yeah, you, you, you may wanna break, you may need to have sort of a repeat performance, cause I'm not sure an hour's gonna be enough.
Yeah, it's, this is the show.
It's a pretty passionate.
The auditorium's open all evening.
I mean, we might need to put TVs in the cafeteria like we do when we have performances and, yeah, we have overflow.
You guys are so optimistic.
From, from, from what I'm hearing, there's just, everyone is talking about this. Everyone is talking about this.
We'll be ready to, uh, subdivide and have smaller group, focus groups if need be, so that's, that's great though, although if you have that kinda parent engagement in Milford, that's fantastic.
It, it's been
I'll take it.
I, I don't know if, if I just get more of it because I'm on the school committee, but I mean, everybody's talking about it right now.
See, I, I look at that as a very positive.
That's a wonderful thing. Absolutely.
We hope we have the same kinda turnout for School Choice. Now Corey's been hard at work on putting that together and it's part of the ongoing study that we've been doing with School Choice.
So that's actually a double header that night. We have School Choice at five o'clock and then the homework forum at six o'clock, so, both on February twenty-second.
Just to follow up to the homework piece, um, Craig did a really nice article in his most recent newsletter that came home from the Woodland School and uh, you know, no matter what happens that night, I think it's just great that people are starting to talk about this topic and uh, it was really nice to see his perspective as a principal and a parent. And, you know, I know when I was first starting out as a teacher, I couldn't wait to give those assignments and those long-term projects and you know, you, you just thought, wow, this is really proving what a great teacher I am. And then now, you know, tables are turned and now I'm the parent and you think about the impact that some of these assignments have on your family life and, um, you know, Craig's perspective of that balance and we want well-balanced kids. And our kids work really hard during the day and if there are assignments that night, we, we really wanna make sure they're meaningful and they have great purpose and it's, it's just very reassuring to know those conversations are going on and people are being thoughtful.
And we, we, just to kinda give the committee a little more background, the curriculum team meets once a month and that's all our CTLs, our principals, department head and, and a few other folks. And we spend, what do we spend, like maybe two or three hours kind of looking at some recent articles from a number of kind of education journals and really having a discussion about, you know, what does homework look like at the early elementary level? What's the purpose of homework in high school and really kind of looking at what some of the critiques are, what some of the positives are, some of the reas- what some of the research says. And it was kind of some interesting conversations at the tables. Um, I don't know if you wanna comment on that at all, Corey?
Mostly to the point that, that you made, um, that the, the, the whole purpose of homework is not busy work. It has to be meaningful. It has to be a connection to, um, what's happening in the classroom. Um, but then there are some instances when, you know, you, you look at the high school level, if they're, if a student is in an AP class, sometimes the homework is not, um, a re- in a, a direct reinforcement of what's happening in the classroom. It might be some sort of extension or it might be, you know, an introduction of something that they have to do on their own. So, it really is very, you know, variable according, according to the grade, so, um, I think it would be a, a real interesting conversation to get the feedback from the parents and then really gather all that information and make, eh, eh, some good informed decisions as to where, you know, if we need to put some guidelines for, um, certain grade levels, but, um, it, you know, I look forward to the turnout.
As a, as a preview of some of the things that I've been hearing about over the past week or so, um, very much in the same light as we've had some challenges in the past where teachers in the beginning of the school year would hand out necessary supply lists and they'd stagger them. So we have parents that have to come, you know, go to Staples two and three times and we wanted to find some way to sort of coordinate that. Um, so, we can get one list and we can go purchase supplies one time. I think some of the comments that you're gonna get about homework are, some nights my child, my child in sixth grade comes home with homework in five subjects and some nights they come home with homework and no subjects. And if there was a way that it could be coordinated, you know, among grade levels or among groups. So, you know, we know that the science homework is on day one and the, you know, the reading homework is on day two or, or th- those are gonna be some of the comments that you're going to hear, you know, and, and I think that they're valid comments.
And absolutely.
And just, all along those same lines, I think it's, I, I think it's coordination in general and I, I know one of the things that you've shared with us in the past is I think, you know, the principals really trying to work together with the teachers and kinda creating more of a team, from a teaming perspective. Um, to Patrick's point, cause it's the, a- and I think this isn't anything new. We, I know I certainly experienced it as a student. I certainly experienced it as a parent where it's the, you know, I, you'll have a student come home and they will subject, they'll have homework in every subject. Or it will be, oh, it's Friday. Oh, great, so what have you got going on this week? Well, so I've got a science test on Friday. That's Monday night, Tuesday night. Oh, I have a social studies test on Friday. Oh, I've got a math test on Friday. Oh, and I've got a language arts test on Friday. All of a sudden you come home and it's, you got homework all week, every single subject and all of a sudden now you're facing five tests coming into a Friday. To your point made earlier, there are students that have tests, you know, that have, do have some testing anxiety. Imagine facing a Friday with five ex- with five tests. Um, and you find them out staggered throughout the week. So, that's some of the feedback I'm getting from parents as well. It's the homework, I think it's the homework coordinating with the test. I think a lot of it just comes down to the communication and the coordination with, amongst the different subjects. Um, and it varies by school. In the high school, that's a much larger project to try and create that level of coordination between electives and all the different types of course offerings that we have. Um, at the middle school, it's maybe a little easier, cause you kinda work in teams. And then certainly at the elementary school, um, with the individual classrooms, it's a little different and I realize that it's a, a different piece. But just to give you a flavor of what, some of the feedback I'm getting from parents out there, this is some of the things that, uh, you're likely to hear that, that evening as well.
And, and we're jumping into this in the spirit of kind of constant improvement and kind of learning from, you know, we have one perspective being in schools. Um, teachers have a different perspective, parents have a different perspective and I think it's good to bring everybody together and kind of have a conversa- uh, and it might even be just starting a conversation, cause I think, I think you guys are right. It's, it's gonna probably be more than an hour. We may, we may have some focus groups or something afterwards or another, another forum, but I see it as a start to a conversation.
The, the video, the Race to Nowhere video a few years back kinda stark sparked initially and it's been a discussion nationally and, um, one that we're ready to have now and really make sure we can do something that's, like you, as you mentioned, it's a great example of the coordination across teams. Um, it, it's a problem.
I, I think it'd be good if we prepared to gather, um, parent names and contact information, maybe do some sort of a summary or follow-up about the types of things that were discussed and what some of the concerns were. Maybe it would allow us to set an agenda for like future meetings, you know, based upon what have been said
That's a good idea.
At past meetings. That way it's not
We can arrange for a sign-in sheet too and as well maybe have some record minutes, you know, have some record minutes for that evening.
I mean, maybe five people will show up. I mean, hopefully that's not the case, but I mean, I, I feel like this is something
I've gotta sense this is gonna be a big one.
Yeah, I, yeah, I really do and it'd be nice if we could, you know, if, if the community is gonna turn out, then obviously there's a lot of concern about it and there's a lot of concern about it. We should be prepared to have more, you know, a lot of follow-up.
Joe?
I, I just wanted to, um, recognize, I, I know Bob, this was one of the goals that you had set for the year was to really increase parent engagement and, um, improve communication across the district and these types of forums are exactly what we need in, in the community and I know this is probably the, the fourth or fifth in, in, you know, in terms of forums that you've hosted so far this year and attendance in the past hasn't been very high, so I, I, I really hope a lot of parents do turn out for some of these forums, cause um, we need to hear their feedback and we need to hear what their concerns are as opposed to just hearing the complaints after the fact, right? Um, we need them engaged and, and involved, so, um, hopefully we get a great turnout.
That'd be great. Thanks, Joe.
Um, with that being said, to Patrick's point of kinda giving the follow-ups, um, as a result of last night's event that you have, is there some sort of either? So I'm thinking about, actually a parent reached out to me, uh, last evening and said, unfortunately, my youngest child is sick. I'm not gonna be able to go. And actually asked, would, would it be televised? And I said, I don't believe it will be. Uh, I directed them to, you know, if there's any specific questions, your school pred- your school principal, certainly guidance and obviously your teacher directly would be a good person to go to and obviously central office. Um, I think as we do these forums and certainly the one that happened last night, will there be a follow-up or something that would be posted on the website?
We're gonna post the presentation on the website.
That's what I was looking for.
Probably really next week.
Okay, good, cause I know that and certainly the more we can direct parents to that.
Yeah, Milford TV, um, uh, if they're able to, uh, has been invited to these forum events to also run a live broadcast or maybe a replay.
That's great.
So that would be helpful also.
Perfect.
I think one of the things that I've heard a little bit of is, is that, you know, please be cognizant of in today's environment, you know, dual parents working. You know, so they're, they're coming home and, and now they're trying to get dinner, trying to get everybody settled down and, and to Scott's point, all of a sudden now they got five tests to face on Friday and so I, I know you'll work it out, but that's one of the things that I'm hearing is, you know, the, the demographics of the family have changed, you know, so.
Great. All set.
So I have, I have one more, one more kind of preview. Um, the last thing we're gonna be doing in March, um, not the last thing, but the next thing we're gonna be doing in March is having a Google forum for, for parents. And this is, this is another kinda hot topic in the community around, um, you know, how are Gmail accounts gonna be used through the school? Um, what's the acceptable use gonna be for the Chromebook rollout? Um, what, what actually is Google Classroom and how is it gonna be used? Those types of questions we're gonna try to answer and then obviously it's gonna be evolving over time as we implement, um, these programs. But, we really wanna be, um, upfront and clear with parents and we'll probably have a similar presentation at the school committee as well. So, um, the committee can engage with some of our tech team members on, on those particular questions. And again, I think I'll need them there because some of it I'll be able to answer directly and some of them, they're gonna have to answer because it's, it's gonna deal with some of the technical issues connected to either Google Classroom or the platform.
Between financial literacy events, our blended learning, our blended learning platform, opportunities for parents to engage on School Choice, the Y's and the homework and then really invest in our policy discussions, I think we really made a tremendous outreach this year in particular to really engage the families in Milford and, uh, and, and hopefully we'll start to see more attendance and we encourage parents to be, to be an active part. We only have your child, you know, for six hours out of the day and we need you to be a partner with us. And we thank the committee for the support. The, and the school committee's been very supportive on attending events and we do appreciate that.
And that's all I have, Mike.
You're all set? Okay. Next agenda item is the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Perry.
Thank you. Uh, I have for the committee this evening, four warrants for your approval. The first warrant is in the amount of three hundred and two thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-seven cents.
Motion from Joe, second from John, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor?
The third warrant, warrant is in the amount of two hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and ten cents.
Motion from Joe, second from Pat, all in favor?
And the last warrant is in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and four cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Joe, all in favor?
And the committee does have a request for out-of-state travel, uh, this evening and it is the annual East Washington DC trip, which will be happening from May twenty-third through May twenty-sixth. It is again for eighth grade and this does require a vote of approval from the school committee for travel.
Making a motion?
Yes, please.
Scott, second from Joe, all in favor?
And that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Next on the agenda is subcommittee updates and when I flip through the subcommittee updates, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't look like anybody's had any meetings.
No.
Well, we, we did have a
Technology.
We did have a brief
Okay, sorry, John.
We did have a brief technology subcommittee meeting. Um, there's nothing really noteworthy to report right now. Uh, we are still waiting for a quote from CELT, which is the vendor that we discussed um, using as a consultant to help us with the, the hire of the Director of Instructional Technology. Um, so, you know, that quote is pending, um, and that's really the only noteworthy point at this time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And I didn't apologize for passing over, I didn't. So, let me just run down the top again. So policy, we had?
No, meetings on Monday night.
Okay. Wellness, ours is not till March, middle school, at least.
Uh, our meeting was moved as typically the first Wednesday of the month. It was moved to the second Wednesday due to co- uh, scheduling conflicts with the, um, outside consultant. So, next week, so next meeting we'll have an update.
And Woodland? Next week. Yep. Technology, we just got. Climate, culture and morale?
Next week as well.
Next week as well. Next week's gonna be a busy week. Thank you, everybody. Next agenda item is the school liaison. Has anybody had an opportunity to get in? Patrick?
So actually, a, a couple of cool things happen, happening at Woodlands. On Monday, uh, eighth grade students are coming down to the fourth grade to give
to give a presentation on the travel abroad. And they're gonna have some of the Chinese students will come down there with them to do that presentation. Now, it's something that's not part of the framework, but it's a suggested part of the framework. So it's nice to see that Craig's sort of reaching out beyond what the required framework is and is adding in that extra event, which I think is really great. Access testing for the ELL students is finished up this week. So all those boxes are getting packed up and put away, which if you ask the teachers down at the ELL teachers down at Woodland, they're very happy about that. And they're starting to pack, to move. So all the teachers have their boxes and they're starting to pack them up to move into the new building, which is gonna be an ongoing process, obviously, between now and the end of the school year. So it's pretty cool things happening down there.
My Middle School East update was half of Patrick's. The eighth grader's super Middle School East, they're going to Woodland along with some of the international exchange students. So actually dovetails in nicely. That was actually one of my updates, so.
Okay. Joe?
So just a couple of things. I'm the liaison for Stacy, so obviously the transition's a big part of what's going on there. And I know Bob's given a lot of updates to the committee over the past few meetings. I'm not getting into too much detail there, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of exciting things that are happening at the schools. As many of you know, there's a science club at Stacy and we have roughly a hundred and thirty students that are participating in the science club. Dr. Gilmore is the advisor. And coming up on February twenty-second, he's gonna have a Milford parent, Wayne Stockey, who's also a scientist, who's gonna be onsite doing an activity with the kids that involves working with plant DNA. And then on March seventh, there's actually a volunteer team of scientists from Merck, the pharmaceutical company that's gonna be coming in. And they're planning to do an activity with the science club students where they'll be designing and building water filtration devices. So the science club's doing a lot of really cool things with the students after school. In addition to that, Dr. Gilmore also secured lunar and meteorite samples from the National Aerodynamics and Space Center. And he's working with the chief of police to find a safe place to store them. He's gonna be sharing that with his students throughout the month of March. He's also gonna have an exhibit at the library as well. And then the last thing I wanted to point out, at Stacy, we saw an increase in the growth percentile in ELA. So as a result of that, the dead and public schools took note of that and they're actually coming to Stacy and taking a tour and meeting with some of the teachers.
I think maybe last week. Yeah, just wrapped it up, but.
Yeah. So they recognize that, exactly, that we're showing some growth there in the percentile numbers and being recognized for it, so.
And, you know, certainly kudos to Dr. Gilmore. My son is actually in the science club and all the stuff that you're talking about, he comes home and can't wait to talk about. So it's amazing what these, what Dr. Gilmore is doing to engage these kids and these students and keep them really genuinely excited about a subject that not a lot of kids get terribly excited about. The fact that there's well over a hundred kids and a hundred students involved in that program is unbelievable. And he really does an unbelievable job.
Yeah, it's fantastic. And they also have that Destination Imagination team at Stacy as well. So just some great programs that are offered after school. It'd be, you know, I know we'll have budget meetings, we'll talk about the late bus and all that stuff throughout the next few months, but it'd be great to be able to offer something like that because I think you'd get more kids involved in some of these programs because they'd have a means of getting home afterwards, so.
Very nice. Next agenda item is future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they'd like to?
If I may, actually just to follow up to one of the things that Kevin was talking about is with regards to some of the parent concerns and questions around the new graduation requirements and kind of reviewing what that will be for the sophomore class. And forward, you were mentioning that there may be some changes in that. My ask would just be if you can give us, give us sort of an overview?
Something more solid from the state, I think we'll be able to.
Yeah, so that's future agenda, but if, I would just ask that we be kept in the loop as I would expect you would give us. But just anything that's, anything that you can give us some information.
Thank you. Any other member? Okay, moving on. Next agenda item is old business. Anybody have any old business?
Just a reminder of a budget meeting on Saturday morning. Hopefully the snow will be cleared up from nine AM.
You're worried about this snow, aren't you?
No, I always, winter's terrible. I don't like winter. So nine AM on Saturday morning and we'll hopefully be wrapped up by noon time. And there's another high school session, I believe. Tonight Carrie had the first of three sessions explaining to another forum event from the school department, highlighting just the contract that she spoke to the committee about, the senior week activities and just walking parents if they had any questions.